First order of business will be the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our October fifteenth. City council meeting.
I'd like to add in the agenda. And under Public Works of Engineering, EU should not be streets and parks, it should be water and wastewater.
Then the agenda, change of language.
We have a second.
My motion in a second. All right, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy, Mike.
Hi.
And David will be I. All right, our consent agenda items include September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting minutes. October first, twenty twenty four, work session meeting minutes and a resolution twenty four forty, accepting donations to the city.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
A motion and second to accept the consent agenda, new discussion. Hearing none, Vernon.
All right.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I, which brings us to public input. Do we have any written correspondence?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
No written correspondence, we'll jump right to Ms. Marie Hala. Welcome.
Oh. Thank you. Hello to the council and the mayor and everyone who's here. This is different than last time I was here. All these other.
Changing it up.
I know, exciting. I'm here basically, I am here for Pine Island age friendly. To give you a brief update on the walk audit that we did on September fifteenth, a hot and humid Sunday at three o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, we had thirty five people that attended. Nine of which were under eighteen, fourteen were nineteen to fifty four years old and twelve were over fifty five. So we had a great mix of all ages. That came to the walk audit. Um, the walk audit that and the route we took was based on listening sessions that we held with community members. What areas of the community that they were interested in us or that they had concerns about, basically. One of them was Main Street, talking about speed. People driving, taking the wrong turns, coming around people, all that kind of thing. And the, of course, the big intersection down at Island Market and Quick Trip. And so for our walk audit, we actually went from, we based ourselves at the senior center and we went down Main Street. Past Quick Trip to the old Better Brew corner. And, yeah, just because of me. Then, uh, one block towards the school. So we went from, um, the senior center over to city center. Passed the three oh one apartments down to the fire department and back. And then we went from the bank down and around the curve and came back up past the Lutheran church and went one block up on this street that's one block over from, or right in the corner of the senior center. I don't know my street numbers. Um. And so I'm just here to, to thank the people that came. We had thirty five community members. Um, we had Mayor Freeze was there, Commissioner Todd Gresseth. Ms. Angie's place, Sarah Dawson from, um, Good Hugh County. Dana Bergner from Three Rivers and Aronoco Age Friendly. Jessica Thornton from Family Services Rochester and Olmsted County Age Friendly. Chris Gates from the Boy Scouts. And then we had Angela Costa Sorensen there from the school from FCC LA. And that's important because FCC LA, the students are looking at doing something called a rural teen road safety assessment initiative. So they got the intersection at Island Market and Quick Trip. Um, along with another group. Uh, that particular initiative is a peer-to-peer education and teen driver safety program that FCC LA on a national level of offers students to do. Um, Pine Island has never done that, that Angela is aware of. And if the students, it's different than a normal project where they would go, um, to the uh, regional level, then have to be judged and then go to state and then go to, to nationals. This is something that they actually do a report. Put all their findings together and what their suggestions would be to make it safer. And send it straight to nationals. If they get picked for that, at nationals, they'll get a thousand dollars for FCC LA. So they're able to use our findings that we have. And then they also can work with the city, the county, um, AARP and Pine Island Age Friendly. So it's a good cooperative thing. So, um, that was, my main thing was just to do that, to thank everybody that came. Uh, we will hope, we are hoping to continue doing walk audits. We've already had people that say, well, what about my street? Which I knew was gonna happen, or what about in the wintertime? Okay, um, and I'm working on finalizing all of the comments from everybody so that we can kind of figure out which are, which would be priorities that we would bring forward to the city or the county. Um, obviously we'll have to go the county for Main Street. Um, so that's, it's our first one, was kind of a practice one to speak, but it was really good. And I'll let you know Rochester had seventy people at their walk audit and we had thirty five. Yeah. So, yes. Um, the other thing I just want to say as part of Pine Island Age Friendly, um, we support Pine Island area home services. We wanted to survive and thrive in the community. If you receive their newsletter, even if you're not an older adult, please complete the survey inside. That survey is going to allow them to um, apply for the money that they have now to keep that funding. Funding is going to be really, really tight for all of these home service organizations. Um, and so please have everyone you know, complete the survey by November eighth and get it back to them.
They promoting that digitally at all?
Um, there is a QR code. If you open the newsletter, and I believe they put it out on Facebook.
Okay.
I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
But. That can be it. But yeah, it's not, you don't have to do just a paper survey. There is a QR code on here so you can, you can download it and do it online. But it's important that everyone does that. So if you have friends that are in town, whatever. Fill it out, get it back to them. Um, more information is better than less. So, thank you. Anybody have any questions, by the way, about the walk audit?
I just wanna subs- uh, just, just support what Marie was saying. So it was, it was not only an educational opportunity um, up there on Sunday. It was, it was fun. There was, you had a very, very group of people. Uh, we were able to interact and we were able to meet people you don't normally get to socialize with. And, uh, out on the walk audit, we had the opportunity to have a very, very wide range of, uh, of an age group that participated. And so to be able to hear the different perspectives from the high schoolers that were there versus, you know, the older adults, just to see what their concerns were. And then when you're actually looking through the, um, the list of items to, to, to look for, become, you become very aware of some of the challenges. And, uh, things that we are doing right and things that we definitely can look at improving. Uh, I was able to go with with Rachel there, with the librarian and, and, uh, and, uh, Ms. Angie's place and then we, we had fun. It was fun. It was, it was a good time and uh, we learned a lot and, and I'm looking forward to what we're gonna be able to come up with.
Yeah, and I will say, I have become much more aware after having been involved in all this. And I've been on a summer board for six years, but, um, doing this, I, I've gone to other communities and Pine Island is way ahead of some of the other smaller communities as far as our walkability and the trails we have and things. It's kind of now just kind of looking at interconnectedness. And as we, as the the city grows, what can we do to make sure that people can walk safely from one place to another and all the other things that are involved in that, so.
It was a football Sunday, so.
It was a fir- it was one of the first football Sundays and, uh, and you guys, weren't you with, with the group that got to buy lemonade from?
Yes.
Yes, the local lemonade stand. So, anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is a draw up location for the surveys for here on area home services. There is a tour program in the box, so if you could come to the library or I'll post it on our socials tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be good. We can get that thing shareable on social media. That's gonna be its best chance of success, I think.
City Hall is a job on probation. Thank you.
We have no one else listed. I wanted to just take a moment to recognize too, we were able to, uh, recognize yesterday Indigenous Peoples' Day and, uh, being able to recognize our neighbors with the Midwakten Dakota people and just wanted to thank them for their partnership and our relationship with them. And, uh, they also had National Farmer's Day. So I want to thank our local farmers because there's still a lot of them in our area and want to appreciate their work as well. Uh, we're gonna go on to administration first. Item's gonna be item A, which is resolution twenty four dash forty one, declaring a council vacancy. As you're aware, our former council member Jason Johnson had resigned his position. He announced that, uh, last month and this month, we're gonna, uh, be declaring this. I'll take a motion to accept resolution twenty four forty one.
I make a motion to accept the resolution twenty four twenty forty one.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Uh, we were able to thank Jason last month, but again, I would just want to take the time to say thank you for his work and his time to this community. It, uh, he did good work with that. So, uh, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is I, which we are going to. Um, so the next item's gonna be item B, which is, uh, council person's wage. Wages for, uh, we're gonna do a public hearing for this. This is something that, uh, council has discussed um, previously, but I will take a motion to open up the public hearing.
I'll move to open for public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to open up a public hearing. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is I. Uh, Elizabeth can also respond on this a little bit, but this is basically looking at what is compensated for council persons that serve on the city council, both mayor and city council members. I will be very clear about this. This job is not for money making by any means. Uh, it's just a way for, to compensate the people that serve. You wanna take this part?
Yeah, so earlier this year, council tasked me with, um, looking at what area councils um, were at and what they paid their council persons. Uh, I included it in the packet, the grid that we compared ourselves to. Uh, previously, a city council just had a set wage, um, per month. And then any special council meetings where it had an additional, um, pay. One thing that the council liked when we were looking at this is another city that had, um, a smaller monthly base pay, but then moved to more of an attendance based where they got paid per meeting, not just for special meetings. Uh, so the ordinance before you is the ordinance that, um, you directed staff to complete. Um, it has been posted. So I believe we've been talking about this for a few months now.
So anyone from the public that would like to say something, share something or speak? You're more than welcome to at this time. If you have any concerns, questions? Right? If not, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
My motion is say, I should have asked too, did you have any write-ins or emails from people?
No, Mr. Mayor, I haven't received any correspondence.
The motion is second to close the public hearing. Um, no other discussion. Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is I. Which brings us, uh, this will be an ordinance change, ordinance one seven one, which is setting the council person wages. And again, as Elizabeth said, these numbers are also public and posted as well. Uh, for anybody that's listening online or in attendance here that would like to see those numbers, you're more than welcome to, uh, request those in, in city hall. This will be an ordinance, so we will be taking a vote to approve this change.
And Mr. Mayor, I will add that, um, so with this attendance based, um, there is a slight increase and that is with a hundred percent attendance. So if uh, the mayor, for instance, had a hundred percent attendance, we'd be looking at about a nine hundred dollar a year wage increase. If a council person had one hundred percent attendance, they would be looking at about a nine hundred dollar wage increase per year as well, so.
Um, I'll move ordinance one seven one.
I'll second.
Motion in a second.
By six fifteen alarm, yeah, I don't know.
Um, council, is there any other discussion on this ordinance change?
And just to clarify, that is paid on a um, based on attendance now for going forward, it's.
Yes, I should, I should have expanded upon that. So per state statute, any ordinance that is voted on, um, it does not take effect until after the next election.
Right.
And so, uh, if this is passed tonight, then it would take effect in January. Uh, after our next regular city election, which is in November.
Okay. Thank you.
Vote, uh, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is I. I just, I'd like to thank city staff for helping look into this and get the comparables. It was a huge help. We are gonna go on to item D, which is resolution twenty four dash forty two, establishing a cannabis registration designation. Cannabis is once again being discussed here.
Yep, so, um, back in June, we discussed, um, whether the city wanted to take on the role of registering, uh, cannabis retailers in the city, um, or pass that, um, or designate that to Good Hugh County, uh, council voted to retain that power, um. Now, after meeting with Olmstead County, they're requesting, um, the same thing. They would like a formal resolution of passing on that designation, um. I included in the packet in a just a draft resolution of both options, whether to retain or pass along. Um, like I mentioned in the memo, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to retain on one side of the county line and pass along on the other, um. That would cause, I think, a lot of confusion for residents. There'd be differing, um, requirements for each county depending on where the business is based. So it makes the most sense, um, from our point of view to have a consistent ruling between the two counties. Um, whether you want to reconsider, um, designating to Good Hugh County or passing both along. Um, or retaining both, I believe up to you. But that's kind of what we're looking at. We're just looking at a consistent ruling between both counties.
We're smoking pot, Bob. Hmm. What does this mean? Can you remind or refresh my memory what this means for us?
Yeah, so the, the, the biggest i- impact of, uh, 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 passing along registrations to a county, of course, most cities are one county, not two, but the, the biggest impact of doing that is that you forfeit, when a city does that, the ability to set your own cap on the number of retailers within your city. So as it stands now, every city can cap the total number of retails, if you want it, retailers, if you want to do that at one for twelve thousand five hundred. So in this town, you could have one retailer only if the city wanted to do that. If you, uh, pass that authority along to the county, you're forfeiting that, right? You are deferring to the county's total cap. And in a case of a city that's in two counties, I think there's confusion potentially about which county's cap applies and how that would apply with the reply and part of. I think the answer would be that Good Hughes county's cap would apply in the part that's in Good Hugh and, et cetera, with, uh, with Olmstead. So I think that's confusing. Uh, you know, I, I'll just cut to the chase. I have told staff that I think that, um, given that you're split between two counties, mostly in Good Hugh, um, the actual work of doing registrations is really not that big of a deal, frankly, for staff. It's not that much different than tobacco registration, uh. And so to the extent you're sort of split between two and it's not really clear how the law is gonna work, I guess, at least in the short term, I'm just gonna say it. I would encourage you to, to think about retaining that authority for the time being, obviously down the road, if things change, if it becomes apparent that Olmstead's doing a great job and they can do the whole city and you can always move that direction later or vice versa with Good Hugh. But I think initially, um, sort of figuring out, I mean, the fact, the fact of the matter, city officials don't really know how this is gonna play out, right? I mean, you gotta be honest about it. I've been trying to be honest about that from the start. Um, the, the biggest thing is that you wanna be able to set your own zoning requirements. You can do that, you're gonna do that. But I think the, uh, the, uh, putting a cap on retailers might be something you wanna investigate. I know right now you don't wanna talk about that, but down the road, that may become a thing that's important to cities and who knows, you know, how you're gonna feel about that in a year or two or five. So. So, anyway, I've said enough about that.
Okay.
Like the idea. Go ahead.
Just for added context, um, I believe we're the only city looking at retaining in Olmstead and Good Hugh. So all other cities would be subject to those county limits. Um, I don't have Good Hughes numbers, but Olmstead County, um, they're allowing the lowest amount possible for them based on their population, which is fourteen, I believe.
The whole county?
Yep, I think they've kind of earmarked, um, nine for the city of Rochester. Um, so that kind of leads the remainder, obviously, for the rest of the cities.
Well, and, and, and so, can I, can I, can I hardly add to that? I mean, here, here's my concern for to the extent you sort of want the free market to work initially, am I, am I recalling that correctly, that at least initially, maybe that's where the council is headed? I think there's some concern I would have if you delegated your authority to Olmstead County. And their limit was fourteen. They may take the view that they're regulating all of Pine Island. They're, they're acting as your registration authority for all of Pine Island. They've got a limit of fourteen and oh, we've got fourteen now in Rochester. That means we're not, we're not gonna register anybody in Pine Island, which is, I don't think what you intend. Or at least that's not what you're open to. And so I'd have a little bit of a concern because I think that's theoretically possible, right? I mean, there could be fourteen retailers in, in Rochester. And if you delegated your authority to them, I'm not so sure that the consequences and that the fourteen cap doesn't apply throughout Pine Island. And it's all in Rochester and that's not what we want, so.
So you're always gonna be limited by the county's cap. It's just our maintaining our ability to to, to cap less than the county's cap.
Yeah, uh, no, I'm not sure if I'm saying the same thing as you know. I mean, so let's, let's forget about Olmstead, let's start with Good Hugh.
Yeah.
Um, if you don't delegate your authority for Good Hugh, then Good Hugh sets the lowest limit possible, which I think is gonna be eight or seven or something like that. And they all end up in Redwood. If you set your own limit, that you, that limit applies here, even though.
Oh, and, yeah, yeah. Our limit can supersede or go beyond.
We're the only city though, right? We're the only city with split county, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
Pretty much, yeah. In Good Hugh.
Yeah. Okay.
But at the same time, when we set our, say, we keep and retain it, we can set our limit. We can also put in the ordinance about, you know, so far from a school and all that. So we can regulate that better here, I think, at, at the city level than the county and being split. This kind of makes sense to, we retain it.
And it stays consistent for everybody.
I'm gonna, Mayor, I'm gonna move the version of resolution twenty four forty two that allows us to maintain our registration designation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second on twenty four forty two.
Both counties.
Yes.
Yeah, cuz you, you know, and I'm glad because Bob answered my question.
Yes, we're.
We have the opportunity down the road. If we need to adjust this, uh, we can, we can do that in, in Delvey back to County. Maybe the challenge we'll have here too is, you know, like Bob pointed out, city staff will be responsible for, you know, paperwork. I'm anticipating there's gonna be paperwork and trying to regulate and do pop checks around town or something.
You're doing those. Todd's doing those.
Todd's doing that.
What's the, why, why would cities not additional conversation? Why would cities not maintain their registration?
Or coach.
It's new territory. They may, yeah, there's, there's a, there, well, I mean, the answer I've got from a couple of other cities around here, um, is that the perception is even though Bob says doing registrations is not that difficult, it's going to be administratively difficult. I mean, he, I'm, now, having said that, I think that's the reason that some cities are delegating to their counties. You know, it's a little bit awkward to do that, especially in a city like this where your police force is Good Hugh County. And you'd be delegating registration authority to Olmstead County, but the folks that would actually have to do the inspections, I think, are the Good Hugh police force. So I don't even know how that would work, frankly. I don't know how Olmstead County would handle registrations when in fact Good Hugh County cops would have to go into the businesses to check them out. So I think it's a, it's giving body weight, maybe. So, but I, if I was voting, I'd be voting with you, so, but, uh.
Yeah, I'm just making sure there's not something I missed on here.
Yeah.
Hey.
No.
Thanks, thank Paul for making this clear.
Keep voting for big government.
All right, uh, we have a motion of second, correct, council?
Yeah.
Uh, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Mayor will, I we're gonna get through this. Right? All right. Uh, let's move on to, uh, some exciting news here. We got resolution twenty four forty three, which is approving the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan. This was something that was brought forward to council, um, at least last month, not the month before, and, uh, city staff offered this online, uh, for the public to have some input. And then we decided to bring it formally to council tonight to officially pass.
Vote.
What do we got?
We've been working on this for about a year and a half now, and so it's, it's nice to see it come to fruition. Uh, we had a formal presentation on this in July and then like, uh, Mayor Freeze stated, we've had it available for public comment. I have not received any comments um, regarding the comprehensive plan, but this before you extend for final approval. My last plan is, um, about fourteen years old and it's recommended that they're updated, looked at usually every one to two years and then, um, updated at least every ten years, so.
I'll move approval. Uh, resolution twenty four forty three, approving the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan.
I second it.
Motion in a second, and I will formally thank those on the top plan committee that participated. Uh, we met quite a few times and we were able to get input from a wide variety of folk and towns. So I wanna publicly thank them for their help in getting this together, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is I. We've got our plan. Very good. Item F, which is resolution twenty four forty four, approving the lease purchase of the street sweeper. We've got some moves sent up here. Who's taking this?
I will, Mr. Mayor. So this is, uh, an agreement before you for the lease purchase. So essentially, we are purchasing the street sweeper over five years. Um, I have the financial documents before you. Uh, within that packet, there's a legal opinion from Kennedy and Graven on that one of attorney boss's colleagues was able to draft. Uh, there is a resolution in there as well. Um, it doesn't look like our resolutions, but they're pretty adamant that they wanted to use their form and not ours. Um, and then.
Who was that? I'm listening. Whose resolution format is it?
Uh, the financial. The, yes, the financial. And so with this, we've already approved and have available financings. We've approved the financing to come out of storm sewer and streets. And then, um, going forward, we have the payments, uh, within the budget for twenty twenty five.
I'll move, I'll move resolution twenty four forty four, approving the lease purchase of the streets.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the street sweeper. I can't thank public works staff enough. Uh, they got that machine out. We are getting the streets cleaned up, something we've wanted for a long time. So thank you staff for doing that, making streets look pretty.
Yeah, they have fun running it too.
I think. I think.
Uh-huh.
My motion is second on the floor. Um, any other discussion from council? Otherwise, uh, Vernon.
Sorry.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is, uh, all right. We are going to go to our, uh, request to amend the utility billing policy. Are you taking this to respect me or?
I could take it, that's fine, uh, Mr. Mayor. So essentially, we are asking council to amend our utility billing policy. Currently, we have a late fee uh, clause that charges ten percent of the total bill as a late fee. Um, what we've found is that we have some of the, um, same residents who get caught in somewhat of a um, they don't pay their bill and then their bills get so large that their late fees are actually starting to become larger than what their bills were. And so, uh, ideally, we wanna work with our residents. Um, we want to get enough to recoup the administrative costs that we have, um, for those bills not being paid on time, but we think it would be in the best interest of our residents um, to stick with the ten percent late fee, however, cap that at twenty five dollars, um, per cycle. So that a late fee would not So that a late fee would not be over twenty five dollars.
That would be a per month basis, twenty five dollars.
Correct, yes. So essentially, if their bill was larger than twenty or fifty dollars, the late fee would be capped at.
I can move approval to amend the utility billing policy.
Second that.
Motion in a second. On the amendment. Nice to see that for working on that. Uh, then the paperwork and the numbers are in the council package, so. Um, any other discussion or questions pertaining to that request? Hearing that, I was uh Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And dude will be, I would thank you staff, Stephanie for getting that taken care of. Resolution twenty four forty five, which is to amend the fee schedule for NSF electronic payment return late fees.
That's a sentence full.
So currently, we have one um return check. Fee in our fee schedule. Uh, with the many different kinds of ways to pay online, um, there's automatic withdrawals from checking accounts, there's credit card payments. Uh, online checks. Things of that nature, what we've seen is that uh the bank charges us different fees for that, and we actually haven't really had a fee to recapture. Return credit card payments, um, it's always been focused on return, return checks. It's a smaller fee that we get charged for return credit card payments, so again, I don't feel it's adequate to charge the thirty dollar return check fee for a return credit card payment. Um, it does vary because it depends how many times the bank. Tries that credit card number, so sometimes a bank will try it once, sometimes a bank will try it three times, and we get charged for each time. That that credit card is charged, so we do believe that the fifteen dollars for a return credit card payment to add that to our fee schedule would be adequate. We would recommend keeping the thirty dollar fee for return check payments. And I think those are the two charges. Am I right, Stephanie? Would just be adding that return credit card payment to the.
Fifteen dollars will cover multiple. Attempts on their card.
Yes, so we um we sat down with staff and we looked at. Previous, so the average credit card is tried twice before it's declared um returned, so I don't think any happen tried three times. So it's usually once or twice. But yes, it does recoup all charges that the city is charged in addition to the many staff.
I can move approval of resolution twenty four forty five to amend the fee schedule for NSF electronic payment return and late fee.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. Hi.
David is, hi. All right, we got a new member to request. Join the club over in Zimbroda area ambulance, um, is that is that a township, correct?
Uh, that is correct, so it was an oversight years ago when the Zimbroda area, area ambulance association. Um, created their joint powers board, they have always served Mizepa Township, yeah, Mizepa Township has not been a part of the board, so they're not, they haven't been paying dues. Uh, so essentially, this is to add Mizepa Township to that joint powers board, and so then they can begin paying dues. Because that the township has already voted, uh, to accept that, so.
They need to vote from all the member communities, is that?
Correct, yes, so all of the cities and all the townships that are a part of the Zimbroda area ambulance association has the same agreement.
Um, I'll appro- do approve the request to approve the agreement to add new member to Zimbroda area ambulance association and move to approve it.
I'll second that.
There were motion in a second. All the townships and all the land. Uh, welcome Mizepa Township, okay. We've got Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is, hi.
About time they pay their share. They're paying arrears dues for the last hundred fifty years.
There we go, we got. At the Fire Relief Association. Uh, you guys. All right, we'll call Jordan feeding to this.
Evening council, uh, on here, behalf of the Pine Island uh Fire Department Relief Association. Uh, as a president, we oversee the pension benefit level yearly. And back in July, had approached you guys with approving our um. Annual benefit level to be seventy three hundred. Uh, with that being said, uh, was kind of talked about coming back and looking at a pension increase for this year. Um, after going through um and looking at all of our numbers after our audit had come in. Um, in the packet, I included three different sheets of paper. Uh, paper that has seventeen at the bottom. Shows our annual benefit level um for the last ten years. And so for the funded ratio, um, as you can see, we've been kind of over that hundred and five percent range. Quite consistently. After that hundred and five percent range, we always look at doing our fiduciary duty of doing an increase for our department. Uh, with that being said, uh, currently this year, we're sitting at a hundred and fifteen percent uh funded. Um, as this year has gone on, our uh SBI fund has increased substantially. We have had two retirement payouts this year, which was estimated around a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, on top of that, we are currently sitting sixty six thousand um from the start of beginning gear with that also taken out. So we've had a very good year in the market with the way that's been going. Um, the other sheets that are sitting in front of you is the um audit, and so. With that, that is actually with the numbers put in for an increase up to seventy eight hundred. And um showing zero contribution, which would be coming from the city, and that's line item fifteen. On this sheet here. So with currently sitting at seventy three hundred, we'd be looking for a increase of five hundred dollars to the annual benefit level, which would put us at seventy eight hundred. Any questions?
So uh mayor. Are you running the show here, are you accusing? Yeah, okay, so acting mayor, so. Whoever's running the show down here, I mean, just as a reminder, I, I know, I know this has been in front of you a bunch of times, but. So the Fire Relief Association, as you know, is a separate governing body. It, it has its own board, it does its own thing, it administers the uh pensions for your firefighters. Uh, there is though a scenario where the pensions that they owe to their firefighters become underfunded. The underfunded word means if all of their firefighters retired at once or were rendered unable to serve all at once and had to be paid out. That becomes underfunded, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty dramatic scenario that you think about where underfunded comes in. But if that scenario could theoretically occur, then the city is obligated by law, even though this is a separate body. You're obligated by law to make contributions to it to support the firefighters that serve you. And so when the pension increases, the likelihood that you may be asked to do that goes up, and so that's the reason for the request, I'm just reminding you of what. You know, you council member have been here to hear this before, but so that's the reason for the request, but.
Or if the market takes a dive.
Or if the market takes a significant dive. The, the market is such that the payouts owed to firefighters collectively are no longer covered by the investments that are made. You have to make contributions, so that, that's exactly right. Um, I, you know, I have no obviously input on whether you should approve a change or not, I mean, I think it's a retention issue, you would hear from. Your firefighters that the pension matters to them, whether you want to do it, obviously, though, is a, is a council decision, but that's, I'm just telling you the reason why this is in front of you, even though this is a separate. Body that uh administers your firefighters' pensions.
Jordan, make me feel good again about the stop gaps that are in place for your investments.
So.
Money gets. When money gets pulled, changed, right, if the investments do take a dive, because that's been a. Concern.
Correct, so right now, our money is in um the growth, um net and income. And so with that being said, uh, with that money in there, we can actually go in there and take money out whenever we want, and. Pretty much, we can move that money into our account, which is just our general fund account, or the relief itself, it's called a special fund. And so pretty much, if something was to start declining in the, in the market, we have the opportunity to be able to pull money and put it aside. Just so we don't have any issues, you know, going down the road. Another thing that's on one of the sheets is our appreciation. So in that slot there, we can actually put in what we suspect our appreciation to be for the year. Uh, that number of fifty thousand is very low compared to what we're currently sitting at for the year itself. But to answer your question, I mean, yes, we can go in and be able to.
And who watches the investments?
So uh, me personally, I have the chance to look at it, and then our treasurer, Matt Shitty, also has the. The opportunity to look at it, so with that being said, we would just pull the board meeting, uh, you know, hold a special meeting to be able to get the money moved.
Alarms, bells, whistles, if they drop, although I just, right, I mean, for all due reason, we thought a year or so ago, we thought we had an issue, we didn't end up having an issue because. The form was whatever, and but still, it's real, right? Which we love you, but we want you to support yourself.
Yeah, right, so.
Which you guys are very. The board is very quick, and that, that happened back in twenty twenty with the whole COVID fiasco, where. I mean, they're able to call the board like that, that's in a couple hours.
I just want to add something to you, like. When you look at the approved liability. These are all, that's all information if, when, when people get to the age where they can. Take it out or hold it over or whatever, there's, you know, when, if something were to happen now. It's not like everybody can take that money and just go.
You have to be invested over the years.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's the, uh, you know. Most of, we only have. We only have one firefighter right now that is fully vested. That could, you know, walk away with it, everything else, people are not vested. Yes, even when they do become vested, they are not posted up to, they're not. Happy retired in the age or anything, so it's not like something that happened in one year, you know, just.
Thank you.
To be fully invested, you have to have twenty years on the department, and to be half invested is ten years, and the age is fifty. To be able to pull that, so.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to increase the Fire Relief Association pension amount.
Oh, second.
A motion and a second to approve the request. We need to make some things.
Feel like I'm making pardons on my way out the door. Just kidding, Jordan, thank you guys for. Yeah, you. Two great guys that come present this to us.
Uh, with your independent approval on that, um, I would also like you guys to um. Be able to make an approval for us to change our bylaws with this increase. Um, with that would in- in- entail is on page twenty three of our bylaws. Uh, we pretty much will write in that this would be the effective date of change by city council approval. And then from there, we can keep track as we progress years to come. So it's just more or less documentation for us in our bylaws.
Maybe something more for me on that, or is it a second? Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna vote first for the request to increase the pension amount, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Hi.
And I will. Stay from that vote. Uh, then we will go to the second vote, which is for them to be able to.
Can we do that follow agenda, I'm just making sure.
Do we have to make an adjustment on that? I, I would, uh. I would. To make a motion to add it, it's a separate, so I, I think that's.
They make a motion to add their request to. Tell me again.
In the bylaws.
In the bylaws. On the agenda, to put it on the agenda, to be able to approve it for them or do not approve it, however, we want to do that.
They just need.
Yep.
How we doing?
He's in the zone.
Ben is smoking.
I'll second.
Just, just to um.
Let's get through this.
Whoever's running the meeting on this point, um. You know, just, just on, on this point, so, I mean, again. Uh, the, the Relief Association doesn't need your approval to change their bylaws other than changes that impact their pension and your potential obligation to pay out, so I mean, that's. Just again, to make the point, but why you'd be asked to approve this, so.
So we're, I mean, wouldn't they change them and then we'd approve them? We're approving a change before they make it?
You, you are, that's fair criticism.
I'm just asking, should we approve their bylaws next month when it's? Looks cleaner and we know what we're doing, or? I don't care.
In the past, we've had a set up bylaws with the new language for you to review before we approve.
I can come back next month, that's not a problem, and have that presented to you guys.
And one comment I'd like to make too, maybe on the uh pension. When you come back with that. Um, future years maybe include. A breakdown, a division of where your staff is at in their pension years.
Yeah.
Kind of identify, you know, like, we got. Fifty percent that are within three years of full pension or something, you know, that'll help us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plan better for realistic, how much we would be obligated to if it took a dive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely can add that. So, yeah, thank you, council for the workshop, and those that attended, so that was, that was awesome, so.
Thanks for your work. So.
Answer us. Perfect, okay, here. We are back on track.
Is there a motion hanging, needs to be rescinded, or can we?
We need to resend that.
Okay.
Motion table.
Yep, yep.
I agree with that.
We do have one, we're gonna go on to a request to approve the mobile business unit for Sistique Boutique. I think I got that right.
Should work, I'll say that ten times.
Sistique Boutique.
Um, paperwork was handed in, and there were some adjustments made, if you in the council packet, you saw it based on the time of the year. And that we essentially got two and a half months left at the end of the year here. Um, any questions for that?
No, so. Now I'm gonna screw it, it's a Sistique Boutique, um, came forward to the city, essentially, they just want to use parking in a city parking lot, they said probably. Just two to three times a month. Um, to sell, um, so women's uh clothing boutique. And so they did some in all the paperwork with the appropriate liability insurance. Uh, they are requesting the uh prorated fee for twenty twenty four. Uh, I think three months or fifty dollars, it's usually two hundred dollars and then um. Full price going forward, starting twenty twenty five.
Very good.
I'll move approval for the mobile business unit versus Sistique Boutique.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second, they have their. Business of different events, we very much appreciate that. Help you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, does that include the prorated fee?
Yes, that does.
Uh, motion and second, any other discussion, council? Otherwise, uh Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is, uh. That squared away, we're gonna move on to planning commission, which is a resolution twenty four forty six, which is a request for variance at three fifteen fourth street south and west. This is gonna entail uh new building in the backyard of the property. Uh, there is information in the council packet along with a letter of. Questions from a neighbor, but it sounds like those questions weren't answered by a planning and zoning. And all questions are satisfied, is the property owner here tonight? That, okay, is that there's questions, they're here.
I would do that, so the city received an application from the Benjamin family, um, located at three fifteen fourth street southwest. They're requesting a variance to their rear um yard setback to build a garage, detached garage. The minimum setback is twenty feet in our two districts. They are requesting to construct the garage. In five feet of that rear property line, so they're asking for a variance of the difference of that fifteen feet. Um, I can rattle off the requirements um from variance in our city code and the statutes. Uh, the first being that variance shall only be permitted when in harmony with the purpose of the zoning code. Um, they're requesting an accessory building in a residential district, so we would consider that. Um, to be in harmony with the code, um, variances shall only be permitted when consistent with comprehensive plan, again, it's a residential district. That's what it's planned for. Um, then we get into the practical difficulties, um. These are kind of the standards in which we judge the merits of the application, um, the first being. Uh, the first being that they're using it within a reasonable manner. Um, again, it's a reasonable use to want to construct a garage in a residential district. Uh, number two, the practical difficulty is the plight of the landowner, um. Due to circumstances unique to their property, um, they have a pretty small lot. It's an older. Um, residential area. The lots are not very big. The, um, planning commission kind of went through a couple of different options of. Attaching the garage to the house, changing the orientation of the garage to face a different direction, trying to do something to fit it within those setbacks. And there's not really. A practical or reasonable way to do that, um, the way that they have it laid out makes the most sense. For construction and. Um, kind of the slope of the yard and whatnot. So, um, they found that there were circumstances of their lot that were unique. Um, and not created by the landowner. So they did. Find that it had a practical difficulty. Um, the last point being that, uh, granted, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, our two district is an older portion of town. They are surrounded by non-conformities. There are garages built on property lines, over property lines. So it really wouldn't stick out any different than in the other properties out there. Um, like you said, there was a letter from a concerned neighbor, um, to the rear. There's a low point kind of in the. The southeast corner of the lot, um, and so the planning commission requested that if council does approve it. They include a condition to mitigate, um. Any flow, because there'd have to be quite a bit of fill brought into the garage, um, that would make that pooling. Um, of water in the backyard any worse. In talking with the homeowner, um, when they pull a building permit, they've agreed to include some sort of, um. Drainage plan, um, whether it includes. Some sort of drain tile to move the water out to the front yard or or something like that. Um, the city will review that. Um, when we do the zoning review of the building permit, so that's included in that resolution as well. Um, we have that public hearing on October eighth of planning and zoning. That was the only letter that we had received. We didn't get any other feedback and. Um, it was mailed out to all the required properties. So. Planning and zoning voted unanimously to recommend the approval with that condition.
Did you, did you have any? Feedback from the neighbors at three eleven next door to you at all? About where that garage is located? Are they okay? Brown house that would be to your. The other east side of your house, yeah?
Yeah, we got them involved. They're good on that. They. Um, previously someone far house but. By the sea fence. So we haven't actually been able to access their garage or really.
Uh, I can move approval of resolution twenty-four forty-six requesting for the variance of three fifteen fourth street southwest.
I'll second that.
Any other discussions?
Mayor, just the, I, Stephen and I, uh, chatted a little bit about, um. The criteria for this and I appreciate he just laid out all of the rationale for, um. Granting the variance, so I appreciate that. So that's good.
Uh, Vernon.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for going through the process and getting that figured out.
Woo-hoo to a two car garage, right? In a small neighborhood. I understand that. I live in that world.
We might get snow this year.
All right. We're gonna move on to public works and engineering, which, um, are we doing these separately? Or together? Together, uh.
You voted on.
Yeah.
In your packet there, we had a request for purchasing two new pickups. Replacing the street and parks pickup and the wastewater and sewer pickup. Um, we got a state bid. For seventy-six, two thirty-three, twelve. So we're looking for your. And, uh, money will for. Jamie's pickup, water and sewer, will be coming out of water and sewer and. Streets will be coming out of our equipment funds. And I have the two supervisors here, so if you have any questions for them. I don't have it.
The public's never seen a thirteen-year-old truck that's driven every day. Fourteen years old now. I encourage you to go look at one of these there. I'm sure our guys do a great job, but the seats are beat. They're uncomfortable. They're not. You know, today's technology, hands-free driving, all that stuff, so. Yeah.
They take, they take a beating.
Fourteen-year-old trucks, yeah.
So we.
They look nice.
We, I'm sure they do. Still, they wear interior on what is.
We've. We've covered up some rust. So.
So that's what we'll have the boxes and everything.
This will have the utility boxes on it. This is a state bid, so it. The Chevy pickup, so. The box is already on. They'll do all the. Wiring and anything we have on the bed here, so.
You guys need to pick out your layout of your boxes and stuff.
Yep.
So I will add council, the reason that we don't have multiple quotes, typically we would get multiple quotes, um. Municipalities can participate in what's called CPV. It's the cooperative purchasing venture. And so what that is, is it provides state contracts or state bids to municipalities and other units of government. So, um, the state essentially did the hard work and they already went out and got contracts, um, like with certain dealerships like this. Um, so then we don't have to, they can honor that with us. We don't have to go out and get multiple quotes. We can just purchase it. Um, through vendors that have state contracts, um, with the state Minnesota.
Yeah.
What is? I'm sorry, you guys, that I didn't ask about this. I have a time. Trade allowance eight ninety-nine eighty-seven boards. That looks like an adder. And then there's a twelve thousand dollar trade-in, trade payoff. Oh, I see. Payoff. We don't know money on the trade.
Stuff on the left does not apply. Um, they just entered that into the quote. Um, so it says, uh, trade allowance, that's. Could actually cover up carry wrongs. That's just eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
So, okay. I see. They just need another, they just need another line for the adder for running boards. Got it? Okay.
Okay, well, I'll move approval of the capital equipment purchase to trade in a pickup for streets and parks.
A second.
We have to vote and then we have to do it again.
We have a motion. You, one of the trucks each voted on separately, okay?
Yes, please. It could be because they're taking on different bonds. So on the streets and parks is take, being taken out of the two fifty equipment bond.
All right, we got motion second. Um, Brendan.
All right.
Randy.
I.
I. I.
David is, I. I'll take a motion on the second.
Um, approval for the capital equipment purchase to train and pickup truck for water and wastewater.
Second.
Motion in a second.
And I will just comment on this one. So we're asking that this is being taken out of our sewer and water, uh, capitally.
And to reiterate too, if there's people there watching, their questions about the purchases, this was, this was planned, so.
Yeah, the funds were there.
Need to get it ahead of the schedule, so.
And these have been on our, um, capital equipment replacements.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is, I, thank you.
All right, thank, thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
When are you looking at? Taking possession of.
Hey, uh, they said within two weeks they should ever get.
Boxes on, they're ready to go. Sweet.
That'll be nice for you guys to have with the space for policies after you sell. Um, we're gonna move on to legal counsel. Bob, you have anything for us?
You know, just real, real quick, since I'm here, um, we have a couple of real estate transactions we're working on, um, on your behalf. Uh, we're kind of stampeding forward like a herd of turtles on, uh, getting the, uh, the sale to the, um. The Prairie Island community, uh, on some excess right of way where, where. The, the complication there is just that there's a lot of parcels involved in that and some of them have to be subdivided. Some of them are outside of the. City and so the township has to weigh in. So we're, we're, we are proceeding toward getting that closed and there's every reason to believe we're on track.
Are we anticipating any trouble? The township or?
Uh, I'd let Elizabeth speak to that, I think.
I don't believe so. So the, the parcel that we're retaining, uh, is part of a larger parcel, so we need to subdivide that parcel. So we will be, uh, going before, uh, New Haven Township next week, Tuesday. Sometime in the next few weeks.
Okay, I think, I think you're right, Tuesday and or next weekend.
I don't, I don't foresee any problems, um, so I, I think it means everything. We've had a discussion with their, eliminated discussion with their zoning administrator. And everything seems to be important or stuff.
Awesome. The, the other one is, uh, the, uh, North, uh, Zumbro Senatorial Sewer District, of course, acquiring land to, to build a regional wastewater facility. That you're very, very well aware of. Um, that's been complicated just a little bit by how the funding works through the state, the state. Uh, allotment, uh, to, to make that happen has been a little complicated and so, uh. I, I've been engaged a little bit in that stuff. I don't want to steal Elizabeth Thunder. She's probably gonna report on all that stuff, but, uh. Anyway, uh, that's what I've been doing and otherwise your staff does not, uh, require a whole lot of legal service for me, so it's been good.
Well, Bob, how is the, uh, payment to mend that or there? You know, that's contingent on the sale too, right?
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, Mayor Council, no, uh, we owe the money. Uh, and in theory, we owed them money a couple months ago, but, uh, they are quite, appear, appear to be quite understanding that we need the money in hand. From the sale to give the payment to them. Frankly, I have not reached out to them to let them know that it's coming, but I take it, I take it they're tracking what we're doing.
I know. I just wanted to make sure we weren't. At a dead stop there and had to do.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no consequence to that. I mean, eventually they may say pay up, but there's no sort of, we're not incurring interest or anything like.
That's a fair question.
All right, also, uh, let's go back to claims.
On those claims.
Well, second claims.
Motion to second, right, claims. Uh, Vernon.
All right.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. All right.
David is, I, we're gonna go into department updates administrator.
If I could, Mister Mayor, um, if I could ask you to reopen public input, um. We do have, um, someone here who was looking at requesting a mobile food unit. In town, um, they did not meet the five mile criteria. And so they are here, um, and I'm hoping that they'll be amicable to talk to you and kind of let you know what they were. Hoping to do to, to bring to town. Um, and then maybe we could consider their application at a future council meeting if you seem amicable about the five mile radius. If you recall when we passed our mobile food unit ordinance, um. We said that the, it had, you had to have a brick and mortar within five miles. This business, I believe, would benefit financially, but they are outside that five mile radius that council set.
I will take a motion to reopen public input.
I'll move to reopen public input.
I'll second.
Sorry, Vernon.
All right.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. All right.
David is, I, it's that. That one, so. Feel free to come up to the lectern and introduce yourself and explain what's going on.
Welcome, please.
Don't worry, we're not scary.
The Mazapa?
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've actually been running in Mazapa for the last year.
Yeah.
And we need out and we're looking for a better community, a bigger community. Um, essentially what we do is we do espresso. Yeah, Joe's Coffee Truck.
Hopefully good, yeah.
I go through their lines.
Okay, very good. So you've seen me since then.
So Tara runs it on her own. I work in town, so it's kind of right now it's been just her. If we get busy enough, she will be looking to get help, but obviously we just are looking for a better community. Um, we haven't found a business that we want to work yet, work with yet. Currently, we're in the works of just trying to find another business. That will essentially let us potentially sit in their parking lot or. To plug in power and steal power from. I mean, if anybody's been by VP in Mazapa, you saw that we were parked alongside the building there. We were plugged in. To a fifty amp plug and that's all we require, but we don't. So Mitch, correct?
Yes.
Mitch from the EDA has kind of been. So we've kind of been discussing with him back and forth a little bit. He had mentioned that like we could. Possibly use the city park, but then we'd have to be in and out at the end of the night. So we're trying to find a business that'll allow us to sit in there always. It's not easy to move the truck in and out every day and it's gotta be plugged in. Twenty-four, seven with refrigerator running and ice makers and stuff like that. So I guess if you have any questions for us, but essentially that's what we are. We're a mobile. I don't want to say Starbucks because we're nowhere compared to them. We're way better. Way better. Um, all her sauces and syrups are all simple sauces, simple syrups made in the truck. So what I mean by that is it's flavors, syrups, or sugars and water. So it's not preservatives and a bunch of the.
Artificial.
I don't want to say garbage that you can get from a store, but if it's good for six months on yourself, there's on the shelf, there's a reason it's good for six months on the shelf. And that's because it's probably less natural, so. We try to have all the natural ingredients. Um, she does an awesome job on all of her menus and rotating her. Um, seasonal drinks and stuff like that. Sorry, I've kind of talked for.
Too. So I like to keep it real and rotate through like just keeping it fun.
So what, what would you like the council to do for you?
So we just kind of wanted to come here and kind of make ourselves visible to you guys because we know that there's been conversations. We. We're looking at a brick and mortar potential build out that kind of stalled out. I just don't want to say it stalled out. It just didn't work out on our end the way we had hoped. So we kind of rethought and. We just kind of want to give in the community, see how the community would go for us, see how the bigger community goes. And at the same time, maybe that can pull in other people that are more potential to bring other businesses to the town as well.
Would we? Need to revise our mobile food truck ordinance? Would we? That opens up.
Bob?
But also, we put this thing in place, kind of just winging it, so.
I mean, it might be worth a conversation of maybe talking at a work session of reviewing. I know when we put that in place, I think it was twenty twenty. Um, it's been quite a few years now. I know at the time, council's intention was they didn't want to hurt local businesses. And that was the intention of the five mile radius. Um, maybe that's something council wants to revisit and, um. We can talk about if it's working and it's not, if it's going hurting or helping of the original intent of, of the ordinance.
So like case by case on some things.
This is, this is something that the community has been very vocal about.
Wanting.
So I would like to make it work.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, if, if it sounds like there's a general sentiment here, I'm, I'm on council. If that's how you feel, I, I would just direct staff to bring something back to you to make it possible to have it happen and then we'll talk about the best way to do that and. I suspect it's getting rid of the five minute mile limit, but maybe it's variance. I don't, we'll, we'll have to talk about it, but that's what you want to do, direct staff.
When is their next workstation-ish? Um, it's before next meeting, right?
Yes, regularly scheduled one in December, but we're trying to put one together to talk about some other issues.
Okay.
Can you give us like special meeting weeks?
Yeah, so I mean, honestly, we are looking at springtime. But we're trying to get ahead of everything, trying to get everything.
You have a plan to operate over the winter.
Yeah, we did last winter, but you're not gonna have. We're, we're not gonna.
People drink coffee all winter.
It, it, it's true. It's tough to have customers stand out there in a blizzard, right?
Yeah.
Got lucky last winter.
Yeah.
This, this winter, we're just kind of putting a pause. We, like I said, we're. We're kind of over Mazapa. I don't want to say that too loud, but we're kind of over being in, in Mazapa, so. We decided.
Do you guys live in Mazapa?
We do.
Okay.
We do, which is why we wanted to be there, right? We wanted to support community we live in and pay taxes to our school district and all that kind of stuff, but. Hey, it doesn't always work that way and we'll support whoever wants to support us, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, so you don't actually need action on this for.
A little while.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's, it's not a rush. We're, we're not trying to get there this fall yet or anything like that.
Anything changes. You're communicating with Mitch. He's.
Yes.
With his guru, so.
Yep.
Well, thank you so much, right? This is something we're looking forward to.
Yeah, absolutely. Wow, we appreciate you guys considering.
Field trip to Mazapa.
How long will it be open, right, in the fall here in Mazapa?
We are actually done right now.
You're done, okay. Very good.
We pulled the truck last Saturday. Last Friday was their last day for the season, so we're no longer open.
Sounds good.
We've got in the backyard, if anyone's to show up and needs a sand.
You sell flavored simple syrups?
Oh, yeah.
Um, we don't sell it separately. If that's what you're wondering.
Sure, make old fashions, all right.
Yeah.
Maybe offline, we should have an old fashioned conversation.
Sounds good.
Missing on the pumpkin spice latte.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
And yeah, appreciate it.
Take the motion to close public input.
Motion to close public input.
Second.
Bernard.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. Hi.
David is, I, thank you. Uh. We are at. Department Updates Administrator, do you have anything to share?
Um, I'll just share a few things. So this. Past week, no, it was last week already. Last week we, uh. Had our all staff development day where we posed on all some offices and bring staff together. So that was another, um, successful day of training for staff. And to get them out of the office, um, we invited the sheriff's department to come and give a presentation on staff about, um, just. What to do when any critical incidents and things like that. And then, um, we just talked about, um, mental health in the workplace. We talk about policy changes that have happened in the last year, um. Do some teamwork exercises, things like that. Um, as attorney Volz mentioned, uh, we have been jumping through many hoops to get our funding for the sanitary district of the state. Uh, we were awarded the ten million dollars and that is now being administered through, um, PFA, the Public Facilities Authority and. They have asked for a lot of documentation. To release the funds for the land acquisition. We entered into the purchase agreement now. Because like six, seven months ago, we've had to extend that purchase agreement twice already, um, just trying to get the funding for that. I believe we submitted. I don't know, our last funding request today, so we should find out in the next few days if everything is approved. And then, um, we have a tentative closing date for the beginning of November to fire that land for the sanitary district, so.
Thanks for your.
Yeah.
Efficient government, right?
Yes, exactly. So, um, we've been working on that. Another exciting, um. Uh, component that I've had is, uh, Olmsted County Board of Commissioners invited me down to give a presentation on an island, just to let them know what's, um, happening. Within the city and, uh, find, um, ways to collaborate together. And so that was very well received with the commissioners. Um, we focused on accessible along funny road five. Housing and things like that. So I'm hoping that we can build some partnerships in the future to, um, work with Olmsted County.
Sweet.
Rachel.
Yes.
Library's been busy.
Library has been busy and we're gonna continue that for a couple of days. Um, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Rachel Gray, I'm the librarian here in town. Uh, we've got story time and music and movement alternating now on Wednesdays. So Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. I think this week it's music and movement tomorrow. So if you've got preschoolers or young kids at home, uh, maybe homeschooling. Bring them on by ten o'clock, um, and Ms. Heidi will be doing song and dance this week. And a lot of stories next week, so they really enjoy. I think this is her favorite part of. Her job is interacting with those kids, so. Thanks for that and thanks to her for, um, doing that and trying something a little bit different. We used to do it on Fridays for music and movement. And so we're just trying something a little bit different for attendance. Um, in my report, I talk a little bit about the partnership we have with the middle school, high school library. Um, they no longer are on the same catalog as, as we are with through Selco. So that they are, we've partnered and that's why you see in my report that we had a hundred and fifteen new. Patrons last month is that the school is, um. Going to be picking up books from our library to bring to the students and to some of the teachers. So it's really exciting to have that partnership with them. Lots of work has been going into that and I want to thank the school for all of their help getting that going. Um, I will be at MLA next week. It's our Minnesota Library Association Conference. Uh, just giving y'all heads up that I won't be in on Thursday, Friday, and that's only in Rochester, so I don't have to travel to St. Cloud or anything this year, so. That's always nice to sleep in your own bed. Something that didn't quite make my report because it, I got notification on Friday. Is that we received a five hundred dollar grant from the Wild Green Futures Organization. That money is actually from the game Angry Birds. And they support, um, pollinator projects around the nation. So I think they had twenty, uh, big mini grants available. And they chose our pollinator garden as one of them, so that'll be paying for a lot of the, that'll be paying for all of the fall. Equipment and, um, things that have been used so far. So, yeah, it's just like Heidi said, if you're looking for grants. And it's like, sure, and angry birds, who?
Thank God and angry birds.
Right? I'll never, I'll never bash that red bird again.
Their game back, yeah.
So that was just something, um, I was very excited to apply for and. They have very, they've got basically no administration on that. They just want pictures and updates. So it'll be kind of fun to just kind of see what else they're doing this year with those other mini grants, so.
Cool.
And we're also going to be applying through Selco for a community collaboration grant. To help fund the rest of that. Um, and that's going to be really exciting too, because we're going to be hopefully putting in a peace poll and having lots of, uh, programming through the, uh. U of M Extension Master Gardeners of Good Hugh County. And so we'll be having lots of different things happening with that. I'll also be tying in, hopefully. One town, one title. I'm looking at a Minnesota author, um, Diane Wilson, who wrote the book Seedkeeper, um, and that's all about the native. Kind of use of seeds and planting and really getting back to the earth. So we'll hopefully be doing that next year. I haven't heard back from her people yet. Um, but stay tuned.
Outside patio seeding.
I have not had a chance to look for it yet.
Okay.
Do we need to talk?
I have, yeah, I have ideas.
Okay, I would.
I'm busy.
Yeah, come and visit, just not Thursday and Friday next week. Otherwise, the only other thing I have is on Thursday, we've got sip and spell. That is our adult spelling bee at South by Southeast. Registration starts at five thirty, um, and the spelling will start at six. So I encourage everyone, it doesn't matter how good of a speller you are, because someone will be better and someone will definitely be drunker. And, um, actually in January, when we did the first one, everyone had a really good time. I think we had twenty some people. And then April was the weekend of. The garage sales and that Thursday night was the last nice night. Of the whole weekend, so we had two people show up. So hopefully we'll have a couple more, so please come on out to South by Southeast on Thursday. Uh, registration starts at five, the event will actually start at six. Thank you so much.
I have a whole lot to do for the next season. Oh, we got EDA. Fire Department. Busy, smoke alarms is the theme. Fire Department's doing some smoke wars. People are running out of those. Sheriff's Office, anything for you, Ducky Crowe?
Um, you guys have anything for us?
Then going well.
Thanks for your work.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, uh, we will be going in, uh, before we adjourn or. We're not going to adjourn, but close session. It's going to be a discussion that ever green place pursuant to Minnesota statute sections one, three, D point zero five, subdivision three, C three. The meeting will be closed. To discuss offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real property by a C and. For Evergreen Place, PID number six, eight, four, two, seven, zero, zero, three, zero. And take a vote on that first. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to go into a close session.
I'll second.
In a second, Bernard.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
Mike. Hi.
David is, I thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Hope that you guys have questions, ask me a question, so. Have a good night. I've done it.